Everyone's in the room at the moment, so we may not do a roll call. We can do it anyway if you want me to miss the chair.
Well, is there anybody? Is there anybody coming in over the internet?
Prabu May, so maybe I'll just do it.
Hmm?
I said Prabu May, so maybe I'll just do the roll call. Mr. Davidson.
Davidson here.
Mr. Robbins.
Present.
I am here, Mr. Hassinger.
I'm here.
And our associate member, Ms. Bresnahan.
I am here.
And town planner Fiona Cofflin.
Present.
Natalie.
Natalias.
Oh, yes.
Natalias.
Natali.
Present.
Thank you.
I like that picture you've got. Okay. Uh, let's see, first of all, in case any of the people here or on the internet wanna know, we will not be doing action item two A because material has not been submitted to us for it. I understand.
The first action item? Yes, that's correct. We did not get the revisions to the plan that we requested.
And also the hearing. Item five B, the continuation of the hearing on fifty-five Willard Street, trustees of Tufts College. Uh, I understand we will be voting on an applicant's request to continue to May sixth, so there won't be any, presumably there won't be any testimony on that one either. All that said, now comes public input. This is when all those people out there have, or in here, who have something to say within our purview that is not on our agenda. This is your chance.
I got a no.
I get a no on there. Good thinking. Okay, so, um, there seems to be no public input. Which brings me to the draft decision for, um, fifty-five North Main Street. You sent around a draft.
Yes, so, um, I did. I circulated a draft, posted it to the website on Friday. Um, it was reviewed. I did receive two minor comments from, um, Mr. Eckel. Um, just some administrative things. The first was I incorrectly put, uh, James Bernardino, who is the, um, an engineer for the firm who originally presented to us, but I needed to change it to Robert Lucier, who is a, an engineer in training, so I made that, um, modification. And, um, there was a finding, um, in the decision that discussed the hours of operation and I changed the wording to that to be slightly more flexible due to, um, the, um, there may be some morning classes that start before nine thirty. Um, so, and maybe some events that might not specifically fall within the margins of those hours, but it was, um, uh, it was no cause for, for concern. I'm happy to talk about that with the board, but that was just an update to finding. Let me share my screen here. Bear with me for one second, sorry, I should have, um, had it up. So, reworded the language, say that the general hours of operation will be Monday, Friday, Saturday from nine thirty to five P M. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, nine thirty A M to eight P M. And Sunday from eleven A M to four P M. Um, with flexibility to offer classes or events outside of state times. Um, other than that, I did get one, uh, another minor, uh, grammatical comment. I said specie instead of species. I corrected that. Um, other than that, that, that was it. I turned those edits around very quickly after uploading the first version of the draft. That was around noon on Friday. Turned those edits around and had it uploaded to the website by half past two on the same day. So, um, if the board has any questions or wants to go over anything specific, happy to do so.
Take a look at F three here on the screen.
Mm-hmm.
Neighborhood business should be N B in parentheses instead of B.
Thank you.
And while the decision says that Andrea Bresnahan was present for all the entire hearing, in fact, she was not here at the hearing last week.
Thank you, yep. Apologies.
Which leads us to the question of requiring the super majority vote as
Right.
As things stand this minute, we do not have four board members eligible to vote on this present at the meeting at this time.
We don't? Who's, who?
Prabu was not here.
The four of us.
Oh, wait a minute. Sorry, I'm thinking five, yes, we do have four.
Yeah, oh, let's change it to have to have five. Um, and you have to have five, yes. Unanimous vote, yeah.
Oh, wow, sorry. That went over my head too completely, so.
I was thinking Prabu, with Prabu missing.
Me too. Clearly, I'm still on vacation.
But yes, we do have four who are eligible to vote.
Okay.
Yeah. Alright, I'm, alright.
Anyone else have any other questions or concerns about the draft?
I don't think so, does anybody?
No.
I will move that the board find favorably on all the findings where there are choices to be made here that are highlighted, that the board have grant the requested waivers, that the board grant the special permit with all the findings, waivers and conditions as drafted and as further modified pursuant to the discussions at the meeting tonight.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Carry none.
Still want a roll call? Okay, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, and Mr. Hassinger.
I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously, four to none. Yeah, actually, if you look at them, somewhere in the law, somewhere it says that all votes should be by roll call, but
Sure.
That's why I mentioned unanimous, or I used to when we had voice votes. Because unanimous then, I said, well, we know who was here.
I, I don't remember exactly where, but there are, you know, there's somewhere I remember reading that all votes should be by roll call, except if it's a unanimous vote, you don't need to
Yeah, well, that's
Be loose about that.
Wherever I got it, I got it.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll contact you, I'll rework the decision based on the, um, the motion and send it. Yep.
Okay. That takes us on to the bond for the writings. I, my material includes, I think it's a message from our council.
Yes.
Saying that with your Fiona's, I think, suggested revisions to the bond, uh, they look sufficient and he recommends approving. But I don't know whether I know, are we voting on the amended one? I don't think I've seen whatever.
There's a link with the word bond in the, in the materials.
Yeah, the question is, is, does that represent the final result or does that?
This is
Is that the one he was talking about, you know?
Yes, the, so the linked, what I'm showing on my screen here, the link under bond is the final version of, um, that was reviewed and approved by our town council with all comments incorporated. And I, you know, the, the amount is correct and I can pull up the estimate if we need to. Yeah.
Yeah, so reading this bond, it appears to me that it is specifically covering the first five hundred feet of Libby Lane, which the bond incorrectly names as Liberty Lane.
It, it's, no, that is correct. It's, it's Libby Lane to Liberty, based on the, um, phasing.
Yeah, so it's the first five hundred feet of Libby Lane and it's all over Liberty Lane.
Yes, yes, 'cause I double checked that, um, before. That is correct. And it aligns with the, the cost estimate that we received from Graves Engineering.
Yeah, and it's just in the, in that paragraph that begins now, therefore, Libby Lane is identified as Liberty Lane Station zero to five, that's the first five hundred feet of Libby Lane. And then Liberty Circle Station zero to three point six four, so the, the, the street is actually named Libby Lane.
Right, yep, good catch. Okay, that's gonna need to be revised.
And it's gonna need new signatures, right?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm?
Does that mean that we need to wait for the new signatures to vote on it?
Yeah, I, I, yes, that, that's my recommendation, make sure that that is, that is corrected because it's, it's incorrect as written. Do we get new circulate for new signatures?
In, informally, it's pretty, it's fairly obvious what it means, but they really could use the correct street name there.
Now, remind me what all is happening here. We're doing a, a bond on that, I don't know, thousand feet or so worth of road, five hundred in and whatever it is back.
Yep.
Five hundred feet probably. But what's, what, what is there for the rest of the subdivision?
The rest of it is, I'll pull up the estimate, but this, this is just for phase one in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand. The approved, we had an approved phasing plan for the subdivision, um, presented by the developer.
And they don't have to bond the rest of it?
They, they, they will be, yes, they'll follow.
No, but they don't have to now.
No, not now.
Usually, I think we see, I don't know, usually I think we see a bond for the whole thing, but
We do have an estimate that, that has a breakdown of each.
I don't, estimate, I'm talking about order. Doing.
Yeah, yeah, this, yeah. Yeah, we're only doing it one section at a time and then they'll meet certain benchmarks, including, um, per Graves Engineering's, um, email to my department, sending an ASBelt with, for approval by the board before they ask for, um, to, to move forward with the other sections.
Well, any more discussion about this?
I believe there's some folks that are on the line here. That are representatives of the applicant. So, two, two folks at least, Greg and Leonardo, I don't know if they would like to speak to this.
Yeah, no, I, I, uh, this is, this is Leo, uh, one of the, uh, partners on this, on this project. Um, it's something that we're gonna, I see you guys saying it's something that we're gonna need to correct on, uh, the address on, on the bond.
Yeah, the, um, the road names are switched for part, in part of it.
Yeah, they're not
Okay.
They're not switched, one of them is simply incorrect.
Oh, incorrect, yeah.
Yeah.
The bond refers to Liberty Lane and Liberty Circle. Uh, Liberty Lane is actually Libby Lane.
Okay, okay. Okay.
The numbers seem to be consistent, though I looked, I looked on the plan and
Yeah, the numbers are
Clear that's the, the first five hundred feet of Libby Lane from Adams Road five hundred feet in and off one side, off, off to the north, Liberty Circle is a, is a, uh, a dead end off of Libby Lane.
Libby Lane, yes, yes, okay.
Yeah.
So I, I can get this back to the bond, um, company and, uh, uh, with insurance company and get, get this, uh, change.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a one word change, other than that, everything looks good.
Yeah, it is an important, uh, change though.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll watch for
So when, when the revised bond comes back, we can actually vote on it.
Right. Yeah, apologies for not catching that sooner.
Alright. That leaves me with one other, one other action item. Approval of bond for the writings subdivision.
That's what we were just doing.
No. Was that? No, that was that. Um, I keep crossing things out too soon. Yes. Um, okay, we got that one. The, the, I don't remember being on writings, but it's, I guess I suppose it is.
That is being the writings.
That's a little bit like the name that we had for the one that's off of, uh, Old Westboro Road coming down towards the turnpike. Originally it had horse things. Um, alright, bills.
I move that we pay our bills.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Hearing on.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Hassinger.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Um, minutes of previous meeting.
We have minutes of the April eighth meeting. Provided to us this afternoon. I looked them over, it was, it was a short meeting, as most of us will recall. The only issue I have with the minutes is in the very first paragraph, Justin is identified as vice chair and I'm identified as clerk.
Switch that. I missed that.
Other than that, I didn't see anything in the minutes that I felt needed correction or changing.
I'm glad Dave is paying very close attention, thank goodness.
I don't always, but sometimes, sometimes I see, a lot, sometimes I, you know, I, I will see these little nits
Yes.
Something glaringly wrong will completely escape my attention.
Sometimes.
Um, alright, um, motion?
Move we, the board approve the minutes of April eighth with the corrections noted.
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion, hearing on, roll call.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, and Mr. Hassinger.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Staff report.
So I don't have a whole heck of a lot because I was away for two weeks, as folks know, and I got back Wednesday and I'm still getting up to speed on some things. Um, but I did want to, um, talk to the board this evening without, you know, no decisions need to be made at this moment, but I do wanna put a bug in everybody's ear about, um, a, uh, the UPS folks are interested in getting, in scheduling and handling logistics for a joint meeting between our planning board and the, um, Town or Shrewsbury's planning board. It'll be an initial kickoff meeting to introduce the project um, and give an overview and allow for public comment. Um, that they are looking at dates between June fourteenth and the twenty-seventh. I haven't been able to circulate a doodle poll yet or anything, but I wanted to just bring this up to the board and if there are conflicts during that timeframe, please let me know as soon as possible via email. Um, we do wanna, they're very anxious to try and get something going and they're planning on filing very soon, so we just wanna be prepared. The venue is also something that's under discussion, we need a larger
Oh, you think this isn't big enough?
Yeah, I, I, I think that we're gonna need a bigger space. I, I anticipate there'll be, well, we need to accommodate ten board members.
Yeah, well, but, but the select, you know, that happens a lot. The select board has five member committees come in and talk to them.
Yeah, I, I just, I foresee a lot of folks from the public coming. We were, we were looking at Tufts originally and the, the added issue is finding a space big enough that, that can also accommodate hybrid. Um, I made it clear that it, it needs to be a Ramona option and if, you know, it needs to be an ADA accessible venue, et cetera, et cetera. So we're still working on that, but I think my priority would be finding out from you folks if there's conflicts between the fourteenth and the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Um, and then we can go work out the venue from there.
I'd really like to see us have good cable and YouTube coverage. Um, and that narrows it down a lot. Wanna be sure that we have a good video to put up on the internet. Or up in G C T V and YouTube.
Yeah.
That, uh, people can be pointed to in the future. And the bulk of this thing is in Grafton, so probably the Grafton side is good. I'm not sure that we're gonna get, that we can get really good coverage in, uh, and particularly to have live cable coverage, uh, at most of the places, like Tufts. Now, I'm not sure. Uh, you might wanna talk to Bob Detoma 'cause I'm, I'm not quite sure, they've been, they've gotten some new gear that I think they use for town meeting. I'm not sure whether they're put together enough to, um, do a multi-camera.
Uh, I, I have worked with G C T V in the past to, to do, um, a variety of events and I, they are equipped to hand, to handle things in other rooms.
Chairman of the committee.
But, well, they, they've done, they've done our, um, they just recently did our, our workshop on Thursday. They've done, and then turned that around very quickly.
What, was it a multi-camera shoot?
Um, it wasn't, but
That's the point. One, one camera sitting on a tripod is not gonna give the kinda coverage that this deserves.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can talk to Bob and, um, Detoma and Bill and see what, what they're able to do. I know that they, they do have good equipment.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say my, my instinct says this room might be good enough because we can have at least the other, you know, Shrewsbury Board here, uh, enough room for our, for you as our staff, the Shrewsbury Board staff, as well as good coverage for both live and YouTube and Zoom. If Shrewsbury has a bigger venue in their setup that has the same capabilities, I'd be, I'd be okay with that myself. It has the same capabilities.
They don't have the capability to send to Grafton cable, um, you know, live.
But I'm sure they can. I'm sure, I'm sure there's a solution to that and they're used to live they're used to live broadcasting.
The other, the point is, if this room is not big enough and we have too much of a crowd, that would be in my mind an open meeting issue. We could not continue for that hearing with that crowd.
It's not a hearing.
We'd have, that
Sorry, yeah, well, no, it is, it will be, it will be a hearing. They're, they're looking to, they're going to file with, in hopes to have their first meeting, part of the hearing process in between June fourteenth and twenty-seventh.
Oh, I
Yes.
So the idea is the first, the first session of the public hearing will be joint between the two boards.
Yes, and their team is, is very big, there's a lot of folks that come, I, I just, I just don't think this room is
My only thing is like, if this room is not big enough, we'd have to have, we'd have to do a different venue, whether and we, if we can't even get the same coverage we would want. But I would say, this is my own opinion, is we should first try to make this room be, you know, or a room that has these capabilities be suitable.
Yeah, I can, I'll check on the capabilities in Shrewsbury and ask G C T V.
There is a project underway to set up conference room F to be able to handle an overflow
Yes.
from down here. I don't know whether it is or will be operational by then, but that is your overflow option.
Yeah.
But, but also there's room for more chairs in here.
Yes. And the other, the other option we do have is whether we're in this room or upstairs, we could have the overflow be in the other room and cat, and broadcast to the other room.
Well, the, the point, the, the, they're looking to do it, I think, more, more comprehensively.
Yes.
You know, the, the stuff that's connected.
Yeah. I meant for like public reasons, public
Because, well, okay.
The, the overflow room, somebody from the, with that, I, I'm not sure how that works.
Yeah, well, it doesn't, doesn't work yet, but it's, it's being, you know, what I'm talking about in F.
Yeah.
That is being worked on. Bob Berger would know.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm concerned about people who wanna provide public input.
Well, I, I think that, that's the point. You have to ask Bob what we're gonna have, or are, are we gonna have anything? And, uh, if so, then how will it work out?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I I, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the space here. I, I just, I can't see it working. I just know how big their team is, they, they come in with at least seven people. Then we've got ten board members, then we've got, Shrewsbury has a staff of at least two attending, it'll be, we might just have to encourage people to, to attend remotely or something. Um, but I think that the prime, the, the priority really is, is a date, so, um, let me know.
Picking a date.
Picking a date and then we'll work out the, the venue.
Then work out the, the logistics of
Have to little far out to know what all of your obligations are gonna be, but yes.
Yeah, and I'll work on
Have to start.
Is, is the intent to have the entire hearing from beginning to end as a joint, or is it just an initial kickoff session?
Just the initial kickoff session. Yes.
Aye.
Which will be focused more on a presentation of the project.
Yes.
And less on following up.
Yes.
Lots of questions and answers.
Yes, the, the plan is to, um, for subsequent meetings, go into specifics based on topic area where we'll have professional peer reviewers come and speak to specific concerns about traffic, stormwater, et cetera.
I, I don't see conducting at least substantive special permit hearings with two boards from different towns with different bylaws at the same time. Maybe we can see a presentation. Uh, but, um, I think our hearing has to be our hearing.
Right, absolutely, yeah, we have two, you know, two different sets of regs and they'll, they'll present, you know, they'll explain that during the hearing that, you know, once we have the initial kickoff, we'll break into our normal hearing process with each, each individual town and, um, go, go forth, but the, for, just for the first meeting to get some initial public concerns out there and, um, give an overview.
Yep, a sort of point of comparison. That is a project that spans two towns. The writings, which we just talked about, about the bond, that project is partly in Grafton, partly in Westboro. And we, we never saw a need for the two towns to, I don't recall the two towns meeting jointly on that. But, you know, they largely, and again, it was, Westboro subdivision rules are different than Grafton's and so they were, you know, the, the project sort of, it neatly, you know, it neatly split between the two towns.
Yeah, that one's a little bit cleaner.
Let's, let's, let's wait until after the election and before we worry too much, you know, you can poll, but
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll poll and I'll follow up with G C T V and Bob Berger about with more specifics about what we can do and let Shrewsbury know.
Okay.
Okay, and then
An overflow in the studio. Except there aren't any chairs.
Yeah.
There are not enough, no.
The library holds a decent amount of people, doesn't it?
Um, when it has a usable room. Unfortunately, it was flooded last summer and, uh, it's not repaired yet.
Still not operating.
Yeah, the community room is still going through a lot of, um,
Actually, the community room has been repaired and the children's room is now in the community room. And the children's room is not available because it hasn't been repaired yet.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's tough to find inadequate space that hold, that meets the capacity and can do hybrid, so. Um, yeah, let me follow up, but if you, but if everyone could let me know their availability.
Maybe the high school auditorium where we do town meetings.
Yeah. That, you could, there's hybrid capabilities there, obviously.
Well, and there's no need for hybrid, you got six hundred seats.
Yeah.
Except you still, you know, you still may have people who prefer
Join on Zoom.
Zoom in.
I think that they, um, well, I don't know about zooming in. I think that the cable goes out.
Yeah, live cable goes out from there when it's working. Town meetings, tummies and the auditorium are live on
Okay.
Anyway. Logistics to work out and all that.
Yeah, the, the poll will be, will be sent out soon for dates and I'll work on the other information background, but, but the board should be aware this is coming. The, the, the potential applicant wanted me to, to nail this down. So, um, in addition to that, we had, um, we had our uh, ideation workshop last Thursday for the, um, the wayfinding and branding grant that we received. Couple of board members came, it was, I think it was a great discussion. We have a survey that we've put on the project page that, um, we will be We have a survey that we've put on the project page that um we will be circulating to allow the public opportunity. Folks who couldn't attend um to provide additional feedback that aligned with the questioning that was asked during the ideation workshop. So that um everybody be on the lookout for that and please fill it in with your feedback. It'll inform how our, our wayfinding and branding plan. That will um favorment design will be finalizing by the end of June. We have a couple of agenda items coming up on, for future select board meetings that the board should be aware of um. Our Fisherville dam contract uh with the engineering firm that presented the lowest bid that is going. For approval on May seventh. If for, just as a refresher, uh we applied for a dam and seawall repair. I'm sorry, dam, yeah, dam and seawall repair grant through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and we got it. Um we're working with, kind of doing a public-private partnership with the owner, Fisherville Redevelopment Company. The councils for tie and bond and and Harrington Heap, our council, we're going back and forth with some language. It's finally been finalized and is, that is coming up, so if you're interested. Um and then we'll, we'll start that project. We'll hit the ground running with that because we need to have that kickoff meeting and the engineers need to start doing the design. Assessment work. Other than that, the uh, the. O- open space parcel prioritization project information is finalized. And has been, um, will be dis- discussed for approval on the, on May seventh as well. Um Dave gave a wonderful presentation. I heard the last planning board meeting, so we don't have to go into it too much. But that, they'll be coming up, so it'd be great if, if folks could come and show their support. Um Dave did send some additional maps. Showing the capabilities that you can do with the tool, which I sent to select board and that's added to their meeting materials. Um so we're excited about that and then. Lastly, I did receive an email from CMR PC about. Somewhere here. Oh, yes, so it asking us um if there's any needs that they can help Grafton cover through the one stop. Uh Community Grant Portal, um particularly um EEA grants. Uh so if you're, you know, if you have a pro, if any of the board members are thinking about something specific. I was thinking that this might be a perfect opportunity to get some additional help to help us update our VMU bylaw that we've been discussing. That we, we went over that a few meetings ago before I went away and Dave had a. Matrix of how um it's, it's pretty scattered at the moment and I think it does need to, needs an update. Um to align better with Grafton's current goals. So that was something that I was thinking about. Um I'm also interested in seeing what, what we can apply for. In terms of our housing production plan, some of those action items. Um and some, particularly some of the zoning work that needs to be done. As recommendations in that plan and then also our hazard mitigation plan um. And implementing some action items there. So if the board has any suggestions or thoughts or anything that they want me to prioritize, I will work with CMR PC and we'll. We'll get some, we'll get some grant applications going.
Is that it?
Yes.
All right, um I'm going to ask if, is, is anyone gonna wanna spend any time on correspondence? Consider that as dealt with. In that case, we're up to. A request from for, for five B, a request from fifty-five Willard Street Tufts. Um asking to continue their hearing until May sixth.
I move that we approve their written request to continue the hearing until May sixth at seven thirty PM.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Mister Davidson. Mister Robbins. I vote aye and Mister Hassaner.
I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. Bringing us to the public hearings, um the zoning bylaws.
All right, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section five. The Grafton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, commencing at seven thirty PM. In conference room A at the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, Grafton, Mass. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties the opportunity to comment on proposed amendments to the Grafton zoning bylaw. Which have been submitted to the twenty twenty-four Spring Annual Town Meeting warrant as follows. ZBL twenty twenty-four dash zero one, amend section ten entitled Fisherville Smart Growth Overlay District. FSGOD to update DHCD to EO HLC. To align with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EO HLC's official name and change. And all associated changes. ZBL twenty twenty-four dash zero two, amend section one dot three dot three dot four. Entitled Site Plan Review to update the process for review and approval of site plan review applications by the planning board. ZBL twenty twenty-four dash zero three, amend section twelve entitled Village and Neighborhood, Neighborhood Mixed Use District. VMU to add a new section twelve dot two dot two dot three to allow for waivers from requirements in the bylaw. Rectify grammatical and spelling errors, remove reference to the associate member vote in section twelve dot nine dot two. And provide clarifying language throughout. ZBL twenty twenty-four dash zero four, amend section two entitled definitions. And section three dot two dot three dot one entitled Use Regulation Schedule. To add two definitions for hospitals and clinics and allow for clinics for outpatient care only for profit. Up to five thousand square feet of floor area per establishment via special permit and or site plan review in certain zoning districts respectively. This amendment was submitted as a citizen's petition. A complete copy of the text of the proposed amendments to the Grafton zoning bylaw is on file with the town clerk and the planning board office in the Grafton Municipal Center. And is available for inspection during normal business hours. Individuals requiring special accommodation at the public hearings should contact the planning board office at five oh eight eight three nine five three three five extension. Forty, fourteen hundred.
Okay, I think we do these one at a time. ZBL twenty twenty-four dash zero one, amend section ten of. The Fisherville Mill Smart Growth Overlay District. Does anyone have anything to? Talk about on this? We've discussed it at some length.
The board has discussed it and.
Everybody's discussed. Is there anyone out there on, in internet land that wants to talk to us about it?
We have no attendees right now.
You gotta show me how you do that while you're also doing useless. Um, okay, um, there seems to be no comment. Can close the, well.
It's all one hearing.
Clo- clo- close this hearing. I don't know whether, how we should do that.
Means you wanna go through each and give, and just give the public an opportunity?
Yeah, well, that's what I've just done on the first one. Whether we close each one as. Uh we go through it or whether we wait until we get to the four of them before we close.
I, I would just wait until you get to the four.
All right. Hopefully that'll work out. ZBL twenty twenty-four dash zero two, site plan review. Any comments, discussion, any public input? Apparently not. ZBL twenty twenty-four dash zero three. Uh Village and Neighborhood Mixed Use District VMU to add new section. Does anyone have any comments? Comments? Anyone out there? Apparently not. And ZBL twenty twenty-four dash zero four. Definitions and section three point two point three point one entitled uh regulation. Use Regulation Schedule to add uh def- to definitions for hospitals and clinics and so on. Does anyone have any comments? Anyone out there?
On that one, we've talked about it before they even got signatures for this, but I am a little surprised you don't have the. The petitioner here in case there wasn't public comment. That's the only, that's the only comment I have, but otherwise.
Not sure the petitioner was fully familiar with all of that.
Well, I understand.
But, no, he's not here, he didn't hear.
Mister Chair, if I, if I may, I um. You had read, uh, I think you had a concern about some of the language in this one.
No, the language was in the draft report.
In, yes, in the draft report that, that we're reviewing now.
We're not, we'll get to the draft report after we close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, sorry.
Having, having provided the public with an opportunity to comment on or ask questions about. The four proposed or the four zoning bylaw warrant articles, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none.
Mister Davidson. Mister Robbins. I vote aye, Mister Hassaner.
I vote aye. Meeting is um, the, the hearing is closed. Which uh I just had one tiny, I, I looked over the draft. And it seemed to be working out just fine. It was just one little tiny thing way at the bottom. The last one, uh the, there's a section, the article was recommended by a citizen's petition. In response to a desire to improve the Bolat Plaza and area in town and to restart, respond. Respond market trends, uh development challenges and needs in the community as well as. Have definitions to allow, allow, align with a proposed change, with a proposed change. Um I suggested just a little change. Since uh it's not, it wasn't, it didn't come to us as a recommendation. It came to us as a citizen's petition. So I suggested that we say the article was submitted as a citizen's petition in response to a desire to improve the. Bolat Plaza area in town and to respond to market trends. Uh market trends, development challenges, needs to. So, so stick in the two and the, and the, and the citizen's petition.
So you took away one of the two comments I was.
Well, you know, I gotta do something.
So I don't, I, I, I don't need to speak to that, but I, I do want to point out that this is true for. All four art- warrant articles that. We are, in our report, we are not recommending anything to the Grafton Select Board. We are recommending to town meeting that the proposed amendments be adopted by town meeting. And that's. Only thing I have, only, the only thing I caught besides.
Well, we're, we're reporting on and recommending to, the, the law is to make a report.
The report, and the report is to recommend adoption.
Well, our report is recommending.
Yes, our report.
Okay. Does anyone think we should approve this uh as amended?
I will move that the board approve the planning board report on the four warrant articles for the May town meeting. With the changes noted.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Mister Davidson. Mister Robbins. I vote aye and Mister Hassaner.
I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. I do hope that we don't have to read the whole re- reports. I don't remember how that's been done lately.
Recently, we've been kind of avoiding reading the entire report.
Right, um it's like we have printed copies available out front.
So we've been reading like the first part of it, maybe the first paragraph or a summary thereof. And the last paragraph or two, and board members present in our, our recommendation.
I don't remember what I read last, last town meeting with these. The whole thing or not.
Much easier than what we've done in the past.
Well, I've, I've read many full reports, although our reports used to be less full. For the most part.
So Jim, if you're gonna be at the town meeting this time, you wanna take the honors before you duck out?
Some years ago, I made the mistake of reading the entire report. And my voice almost gave out at the end of it and I could see everybody in the room was really, why are you reading all that?
Yeah, well, it, it, there was a time when you did, and in fact, when I joined the board, they, or just before I joined the board, anyway. They used to decide which member of the board should read each report. In, in, in more, in more recent years, the chair just did it. To whatever level. And we can fight it out.
So you're gonna read them this year?
I can't hear you what you're saying, maybe. Maybe. Let's fight it out at uh. When we get there.
One sense, the board, the board recommends passage of this article.
Well, it ought to explain what the article is. Yeah, a little bit.
Give a little bit of information there.
Okay, the only thing I have left on my agenda is uh report. Reports from uh planning board representatives on town committees and CMR PC. Does anyone have anything? Apparently not. Is there anything else which may lawfully come before the board? Apparently not.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, not debatable. Roll call.
Mister Davidson. Mister Robbins. I vote aye, Mister Hassaner.
Aye, motion carried unanimously. We're outta here.